All right, good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will make either a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Scott, will you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Chair Burns?
Here.
And Board Member Eravola?
Here.
Board Member Cullen?
Present.
Board Member Deacon?
Here.
Board Member Minchif?
Here.
And Board Member Gingold? And Board Member McCauley?
Present.
All right, with six members present tonight, we do have a quorum. Also present tonight is zoning administrator Scott Mangum. This is a formal meeting, and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most importantly, only one person speaks at a time so that all testimony may be accurately recorded. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our procedure is to hear from staff on the documents on file, and then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. Next, persons who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. Any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. When all supporting and opposing testimony and statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Then, the board will close the record and begin deliberations. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you address the board, please state your name and address and sign in on the provided sheet. Our meetings are audio and video recorded. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you can be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. There are three items on the agenda tonight. One case has been withdrawn and will be re-noticed for a future date. 1239 Asbury and 1224 Dumpster, they have asked for a continuance. So, I would love to have someone make a motion that we move that to the next meeting, which is February 20th.
I'd like to make a motion that we move 1239 Asbury Avenue, 17 ZMJV 00100 to our meeting of February 20th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, the case moves to our next meeting. And with that, we are rapidly moving to the last case on the agenda tonight, which is 1233, 1235 Hart Tree Avenue. First, anybody who wants to speak to that case, will you please raise your right hand if you're speaking? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Fantastic. Scott, will you please read the case into the record?
Yes, thank you. The request is for a special use permit. Evanston Township High School submits for a special use for a special educational institution public within the I-2 General Industrial Zoning District in order to operate a high school for students with behavioral and emotional needs. The Zoning Board of Appeals on this case makes a recommendation to city council, and the city council is the determining body. City staff and DAPR have reviewed the proposal and have recommended approval, subject to conditions. Thank you.
Okay. Whoever would like to tell us about your case, please come on forward. And if you can start by giving us your name and your business address.
I will start, but others may also come up as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. My name is Mary Rodino, and I'm sorry, what else did you say?
Your business address.
Okay, 1600 Dodge Avenue here in Evanston. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Evanston Township High School. And we have had an initiative for about eight or 10 years where we've been wanting to provide a way to bring some of our off-campus students back closer to home, if you will, because a lot of them spend up to a maximum of about 60 minutes each way on transportation to outside serving schools, and those can be a private therapeutic day school or a public special education day school. So, we had explored a few properties in Evanston, and one of which I'll mention right before the property that we're talking about tonight was the Old Shore School site. We had an engineering study done on that site. It was too big, and it needed a lot of repairs. And I was kind of happy to learn that, according to the news reports, that the city is actually taking over that property, and that it just, I felt really good about the direction that we took at that point, because I think that everyone in Evanston will benefit from that shore school property, as opposed to us utilizing that space for 25 to 40 students. I think it would have been a much, not as good of a use of the space, if you will, so I just wanted to add that. So, in searching through a few properties, we looked at this space at 1233 Hart Tree initially, and it was originally looked at before my tenure in this position, although I've been with the district that whole time for the last 11 years. We had some discussions about it suiting the needs for the students, and at that point decided to also look into the 1235 Hart Tree, so it's actually two office spaces, if you will, with two entrances. I did bring a couple of slides, but they're also in the packet. I don't know if you've already seen them, or if you want to see the visuals. We also brought, we'll be happy to display some boards or talk about that if there are questions. But there are a couple slides, it's pretty far down, Scott, sorry. Like I said, I have them, so there we go. So, there are some slides, there are also some pictures of the space and some layouts of the proposed site. But the proposal is that about 22 students to start would be brought back into the community, but receive basically the same services that they're receiving at an outside school, only we would now be the providing school. It would create between 12 and 18 full-time positions, certified teaching staff, paraprofessional staff, two safety positions, and like an office-type manager position. So, we have had lengthy discussions with the owner. He's been at some of the meetings throughout our process. Our architect is here tonight, our Director of Special Education is here tonight, and our attorney is here as well, and we're all very familiar with the ins and outs. We did apply, or we had been involved in a text amendment change to allow special education public institution isn't allowed special use, and so we've seen that process through, and so now we're here for our special use application. So, I don't know if there's any other introductory information you'd like, or if there are questions. One thing I would add is that the reason that this particular spot was important for us is that not only did it have a layout that was conducive to the number of kids that we're trying to serve, it is three blocks from our school, and it would allow students to transition back into the high school, if that's appropriate for them, for whether it's one period of band or any other type of class, to possibly transitioning back into the school full-time. There are some students who will be able to do that and some who won't. And I also wanted to mention that Hart Tree Avenue is unique in that it is industrial on the, industrial zoned on the east side and residentially zoned on the west side. So, if it was across the street, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation, but it's a really great space for us. We have good plans for it. We plan to invest money and make it a nice learning space for the kids. And we've addressed, you know, minimal traffic issues, putting in a bike rack, that kind of thing, at the committee level the past two weeks at the DAPR committee. And we're more than happy to comply with everything, because we're really doing this for the students, and so of course their safety and comfort is really most important to us. So, we do have a couple of layouts of the slides of what the interior will look like, as well as the exterior, and that's about all I have.
I have a couple of questions. This is the building overall, the spaces, the two offices that you're leasing are how many square feet?
Off the top of my head, I think it's between $6,000 and $7,000.
$48, $40.
$48, $40 for both suites?
$48, $40, okay. And are there other offices within that building? I know that, I know that just, I'm familiar with the business is in the immediate vicinity, but within that same building, there are other offices?
So, not, not that would enter through that door? So, the, so the two? Let me see if I can.
Oh, hang on, hang on, hang on. Take a microphone with you.
No, I was coming right back. So, what I wanted to show is that there's an exclusive entrance to the suite. In fact, there are two of them. No one else would be using that particular entrance, if that was your question. There are lots of businesses in the building. In fact, just to the south, there is a business called Samick. You can kind of see their entry here, and then our entries are here.
But, but your occupancy will, will go from the very front of the building to the very back of the building? It's not as though you have contiguous walls or?
There are contiguous walls. It's a huge, I think it's sort of a square-ish looking building. I know there are some aerial shots, I think, in the packet, but yes, there are other businesses within the depth of the building. There would not be, we would not be using any of that space, and the doors would not, you know, right, there is one door, I think, that leads back into that contiguous space, if you will, but we would not be utilizing it ever.
And the nature of the businesses in the backspace? The reason I'm asking this is because as I went through the packet, certain concerns arose in my mind for the students. For example, I use Allegra all the time.
We do too.
And, and I know that some of the processes that Allegra uses in their work create odors, and you know, I am sure, I'm quite sure that it is, you know, they follow OSHA standards and that it doesn't create a hazard, but nonetheless, I'm very aware of it when I go into the Allegra property. So, I'm just, you know, wanting to get some assurances that you have vetted all of the surrounding businesses to assure that the students would be able to enjoy their day at school without that kind of, it's more of an annoyance.
Exposure.
It actually is.
Right. So, the space directly connected to ours, if you will, is actually a warehouse space for Tapes Unlimited. So, it's just storage, it's not even a manufacturing facility that, in the contiguous space. I do know that there are quite a few things to the north of our space before you get to Allegra, and one of which I believe is, gosh, I can't think of the name, the one that provides autistic services, there are two in the building, but one of them, what is it? Rennland Services. So, they, because we see their pace buses often stop to drop and pick up their, the people that they serve, and so that population is definitely much closer, and I don't think that it's ever been an issue, but I think there are at least a few businesses in between. And our immediate neighbors are, like I said, a warehouse for Tapes Unlimited, and then just to the south, Samick, I believe, is a restaurant, supply distribution, you know, pots, pans, utensils kind of thing. So, I don't think there are any manufacturers in any close proximity that, I think, I want to say there's a baking company to the south, but that wouldn't be bad.
Yeah, Sugar &amp; Spice, I think, is there as well.
But there aren't, there's no manufacturing located within the immediate, I don't even know that there's a lot of manufacturing in that 200,000 square foot space, but certainly not located, and we've been over there at all times of the day and have never smelled anything. And certainly, I know that our Director of Special Education would have been particularly sensitive to that with the needs of the kids.
The other concern that I had, have, so has, has this project been presented to the single-family homeowners across the street?
So, there have been two processes so far that I can think of. One was the alderman had a ward meeting, and he said that his list served was about 1,000 people, so certainly that would include all of the homeowners. There was also the postcard process that went out regarding this application to anyone within 500 feet of the entire building, not just like our entry on Hart Tree. So, that was a list of about 115 or so. And then we, ETHS sent to that same list that the city provided us, we sent an invitation by mail in December to a coffee and gathering for all of those neighbors. We held that on January 9th. Six people attended, and we had six administrators there to try and answer any questions that they had on the project. So, I can think of those events in particular. When we went to the DAPR committee the last two weeks, one of the issues that was raised, and I don't know if they heard from, from the neighbors or if the staff members were just concerned, but one of the things that we heard is that even though there's public parking on the west side of Hart Tree, they wanted to make sure that our visitors and staff would not be using that. So, from the first DAPR to the second DAPR meeting, we went back, talked to the owner. There are about 120 parking spaces at the corner of Hart Tree and Dumpster, between two lots on both sides of the alley, and they're only about 50% utilized during the day, and that's completely available to us all day long. So, we did commit to making sure that staff and visitors, whether it's parents or other visitors, would know that it's not acceptable to use the street parking that is available to the homeowners across the street.
And then I have one last question. Is there any provision for outdoor activities for the students?
No. Do you want to come? Or do you want me? Okay. We've had this conversation a few times, so. No, there, there is a PE component to the special education, you know, the individualized or the IEPs, the placements. There is a physical education component.
I saw that the multipurpose room is sometimes, it seems sometimes configured as a lunchroom and sometimes as a gym space.
Exactly. And so, it would meet any PE component that's necessary, although I do know that the Special Education Department has had some additional relationships in the past, for example, like with the YMCA, so that kids could also go, you know, outside of school. But, but the PE component that's required in school will definitely be satisfied by equipment that would be available in the multipurpose room. And we're hoping that by being closer, the kids will also participate in after-school activities, clubs, sports, which a lot of them, if they're, you know, in a van going to Arlington Heights, they have trouble coming back. Our kids start practices and things at like 3:45.
Sure.
So, we're hoping to really encourage that, it's important to us.
Okay, thank you.
Can you clarify on the two interior spaces? Will they then be configured together? That wasn't entirely clear to me, or they maintained as two separate spaces?
So, I know this is, sorry, I know this is in the packet as well, but this is actually both spaces together. So, you can tell each space, as they're separate now, but they have some adjoining doors currently, they each have their own entrance. So, we've incorporated both entrances and actually changed the configuration of some of the inside spaces, so that there's a clear kind of roundabout for adult supervision and making sure that, you know, someone's not on this side and, you know, we're on this side. So, there's been an entire redesign of the interior space, but these are the two existing. So, currently, it's sort of cut right about here, because this is the realty space for Lark Management, which is the owner and manager of the building space. So, my understanding from the owner is that the original space we looked at, which was the bigger, was an office space at one point, but it's been vacant for some years, and then that other smaller side of it was the realty company for the management. Oh, here's another drawing.
And can you address, I know there's been discussion, and I saw some discussion in the, in the packet certainly, but can you address exterior circulation, traffic, student drop-off and pickup?
I'm just going to pull out some of the answers that we had, things that came up at the DAPR meeting. One thing that came up, not necessarily related to congestion, was bike parking, and our students are, we have a lot of bikers, like, we can't provide enough bike spaces on the main campus. So, we thought that was a great suggestion, and the owner was really, he was very happy to do that, and so we've committed to putting a bike rack, which there happens to be a grassy area just to the south next to Samick, so we would be adding a bike rack for students who choose to bike to school. Other than that, we expect that a few students may choose to drive, there's plenty of free parking in the lot at Dumpster and Hart Tree. A few students may, some students may walk, we have a lot of walkers currently, and this is only three blocks from us, so we think that there would be a continuation of that. And then, if needed, the students are entitled to transportation. We don't, I don't know if you all know, but ETHS is exempt from having to provide bus transportation, because we're serviced by the CTA. So, District 65 provides it, but they have a much younger student base, but District 202 does not provide bus service. However, if it's part of that student's individualized need, we do have some bus routes for our special education students now. We would envision that probably being one bus that would pick up once in the morning and drop off once at night. You know, we wouldn't expect any students who have, for example, an individualized pace bus or something, there's not, we don't expect there to be a lot of coming and going. If there is a student who would take a class back at the main campus, we do have some 14-passenger buses that we own. One is dedicated specifically to special education, so that bus would pick them up and drop them off, but that would be really the only kind of coming and going during the day. Other than that, we expect a few students dropped off by parents, a few will drive, some will walk, some will bike. So, we don't see there being a lot of impact. Like I said, we do, we've seen the pace bus drop off at Rennland a few times. They actually, they have to kind of sit on the east side of Hart Tree when they pick up and drop off, and when we talked to the staff members in the DAPR committee, the owner actually was there and talked about how their parking spaces are so deep in front of these particular suites, that in the past, they were able to park two cars, front to back, as people who worked in that spot. So, we have two spaces designated for drop-off, and those are actually, you know, double-long, if you will, I know that's not the right term, so, and one handicap space planned. So, you know, again, our initial thought is about 22 students, and we would never, excuse me, never want this school to serve more than 40 students, so we're not talking about the kind of traffic that you see around ETHS if you're ever there at 8:30 or 3:35.
And do you know, it looks like there's an active, there's a loading dock just to the north of your building. I don't know if that's active. Are they receiving semi-trailers there?
They do have some semi-truck deliveries, however, the loading dock that's closest to this suite, which is, by the way, not even really the main entrance that the students will use, so I should point out that if you look at the drawing that I have on the floor where it says proposed floor plan, the entrance that's closest to the big orange block to the right of the drawing, that's really the main entrance. It includes a vestibule, it includes a bank of lockers, a safety officer. That door is the main door. So, the door to the north is not the one that the students would generally travel in and out of, but if you go to the end of that part of the building, there are a couple of driveways for trucks. I don't know that they're always, I can't really answer who delivers and how often, but I do know that the first door, the first loading dock door is not actively used. I want to say it was like, there was a dumpster or something that's been in front of it. So, any deliveries of that type would not be in the closest driveway to our school, they're a little bit further to the north. And again, our students are not, it's not going to be any kind of open campus like we have at the main campus for lunch, for example. Our students would not be traveling in and out during the day, and we have two security officers who would be stationed there, and certainly when students are traveling in or out of the building during dismissal and entry times, they would be supervised by an adult.
Excuse me, I was there, I just have a couple of questions about, not as long as those questions, but did you have this reception in the space? The reception with the people?
Of the meeting, the coffee?
Yeah, the coffee.
No, it, it's kind of a rough office space. We had it in, at ETHS main campus.
Okay, because I was there about 1 o'clock today, and there was a big truck in the loading dock right next to you with tape masters on it, so.
Okay, when we were there, there was a dumpster in front of it. I've never seen a truck in that most recent one.
Have you communicated with them about, because I can't imagine that's for therapeutic, a therapeutic day school and that kind of noise. It was a full semi-trailer.
A delivery trailer?
Yeah, and he was running his engine, sitting there, 1 o'clock.
We've not had that conversation. I would, I mean, I'm not, I would have to kind of defer to the programmatic staff, including the Special Education Department, but what I can say is that the thing that would be closest to that? Would be this?
Yeah.
Which is a multi, which is a multipurpose room and not a classroom space? There's a classroom space that's at the front, which faces the Hart Tree side, so I don't know if you've thought about that or have had any concerns, but, you know, certainly we would try to minimize any disruption, but it is closest really to the multipurpose room. You can actually kind of see it outside of the artist's rendering, you can see the outside window of the multipurpose room. So, and you can see the dumpsters in the picture on the view looking south. So, I don't know if they, if that was just something that was there for a period of time, but our experience in the space had not been a lot of deliveries.
And no loud, loud, large trucks?
There had been, I've seen an occasional semi-truck in the area, but it's been one of the other loading dock doors, but I've only seen it once that I've been there. I just don't know the actual delivery schedules and things. What I can say is Tapes Unlimited has a lot of tape in the warehouse, so I can't imagine how often they would need another truck, but that is my completely personal opinion.
Right. And my next question is pretty much to you, Scott. I was just wondering, I see how the uses over there are changing from heavier industrial uses to lighter uses, a lot of them that do have to do with children. Is that what you're encouraging? Is that what the city is encouraging?
See, the zoning district there, the I-2 does allow, some of the uses that are there are legal non-conforming uses, and have been there for a long time. Some of the uses and the zoning code has been amended over time, and so some of the uses, like a commercial indoor recreation, like the Goldfish Swim School, is something that's a special use there, so special use was, was obtained for that.
Okay, thank you.
And honestly, it was one of the things that sort of attracted us or led us to believe that it would be a good fit for us, because we looked at things like Erie Health, which had moved in not too long ago. We looked at Kinder Care, and I thought, well, the three-year-olds can be there, you know, and then have Dreams, which services autistic children. A lot of District 65 children go directly there after school. I shouldn't say a lot, because I don't know the number, but I know that they do serve some District 65 children, and then most recently, Goldfish Swim School. You know, but, but clearly, they either, like Kinder Care had been there, like Scott said, as a non-conforming, you know, they predated everything that anyone could find as far as what their permitting or their process had been. But we certainly looked at all of that, in addition to the proximity to the school, and felt like the use of that building had really changed, and, you know, even though Allegra and Tapes Unlimited and some of those are on the side street, it's really, you know, if there was a spot right on Dumpster, we'd be great with that too, it's just that whole front of the building had filled up. So, we still felt like it was a good fit with a lot of the newer things that are coming into that space.
I have a couple of questions. Sorry.
Nope, go ahead.
So, can we go back to the site plan? Yeah, so the first question, the things that are in front of the entrances, are these handicap ramps?
Yes, and our architect is here if you want to know details.
No details, I just want to know that it is ADA compatible.
Absolutely. Not only would, would the city require that, but we're also subject to the Regional Office of Education, and it would be one of the first things they would require of us in all, in any new space we would build, not just for special needs children.
Just wanted to be sure, thank you.
And there is significant construction that will take place in the front of the building, if any of you have seen, whether in the pictures or in person, what the building looks like now. It's certainly not compliant, and the landlord has actually pledged to bill that all out to our specifications, so.
So, the other thing that I know very well for this lot and for the adjacent, the deep parking spaces. So, they are really convenient, at the same time, they're, I would say, a nuisance for the street, because you have so many, not curb cuts, but every space accesses the street and vice versa. So, in many cases, this is a hazard. So, if you can work just a little bit to minimize this hazard, it will be a benefit for all the visitors and all the students, because once again, it is a kind of a strange situation. It seems so convenient that everybody exits and enters these spaces, interrupting the sidewalk. I don't say that there are plenty of people walking there, but regarding the traffic, it interrupts the traffic a kind of a, very, very badly. So, there could be a better solution that you can work on that, just a recommendation.
I totally agree, and we have no intention of allowing anyone to park, I think the word would be tandem. word would be tandem, in those spaces. It's definitely not part of our plan and not something we would allow. You know, we, employees would be required to know that they need to park in the lot on the corner. And then, there wouldn't be a lot of visitors during the day, so it's not the kind of place where people really come in and out. There could be a parent for a meeting, or, you know, someone from our main campus who drives over. But we would never allow, and the good thing is, our safety staff write tickets that are actually City of Evanston tickets, and they're money-generating tickets for the, I mean, I don't, I'm just saying, they're real tickets. So, we would not encourage it or allow it, and we'll have two safety staff members who would enforce it.
Simply be careful.
We agree.
The last question, which is not a zoning question, and I apologize to ask it, but did this layout, the interior one, pass the fire marshal?
Well, there is a fire.
In DAPR, he usually is there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. The issue, I think it's Mr. Tristan is his name.
Yes.
The issue, the only issue that he raised was, he had a real technical term for it, but, and I don't remember that, but are the distances between the two entrances?
Exactly.
Because there's a minimum amount of distance, and our architect was already aware of that. That's a requirement for us as well with the regional office, too, I think.
Because it seems a problem.
Yeah. No, it's, the requirement is 32 feet and some inches. We're over 33, so.
Well, I would agree with that. Still, the back rooms, if there is a fire somewhere in the middle, nobody can exit, because your two exits are on the front, and this is a hazard. So, it's.
When you say back rooms, you mean our back rooms, not whatever lies behind us?
In the layout, the rooms that are at the back, and if you have a fire somewhere where the toilets are, nobody from the back rooms can exit.
I can address this. I'm Athie Tufexis with Studio GC. Our business address is 223 West Jackson Boulevard in Chicago. We're the district's architects, and we're working with them on this project. Both suites are fully sprinkled, so as such, we meet both, any minimum travel distance required to an exit from any remote location in the space. So, we meet that requirement as well as the separation distance, which is what Mary was alluding to, for the minimum separation required between the two doors. And because we are sprinkler, there is a different requirement from sprinkler versus a non-sprinkler building, but we do meet both of those.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Was there, sorry, in the plan, or did I mis-hear this, that in one of those classrooms on the east side, that there's a door that goes to the space behind?
We are infilling any of the two doors.
Okay.
So, to not allow passage through, because we don't want anybody entering into the school space.
And it's not required for the fire code.
Right. Especially because those doors lead to somewhere else internally, so.
Those two locations. Okay. Thank you.
And what, what length is the lease term?
10 years.
10 years.
Those 14-foot trucks you mentioned, the 14-foot vans, those get parked at the end of the street, right?
Oh, those are parked on our main campus. They wouldn't stay there.
Okay. So, they, so if the kids need to go back over to ETHS, the van's going to come from ETHS, come over, get them, and then go back?
Correct.
When they pull up to the property, where do they go?
They would fit in the drop-off space.
What do, tell me what you were considering the drop-off space.
It's marked. Can we go back to that slide?
Yep.
So, they're the two leftmost spaces or northernmost spaces? And our 14-passenger vans fit in a standard space. We park them in our lot right now in a standard space. They're more long than they are wide, if that makes sense?
Yep.
So.
And so, when any of the kids come on private vehicles, right, if they can't get there via pace or caregiver or anything like that, they're getting dropped off. That vehicle is pulling into the, one of those two drop-off spots, they're getting out, and then that vehicle is backing up. Is that correct?
Yes.
And is that the case for all of the, all of the, when they're being dropped off by a parent or a caregiver as well? How are you going to make sure that we're not, the kids aren't getting dropped off on the street, right, on the west side of the street and then crossing across the street?
Well, again, we'll have two safety staff members posted there all the time.
Okay.
So, at least one, if not both, would be outside during drop-offs and pickups, and...
Directing parents on, or cars where to drop kids off safely?
Definitely.
Okay.
You know, the school bus would clearly have an arm. I don't know what the route would be if there even is a school bus.
Right.
But if some kids do require transportation, it would be one school bus drop-off arms, you know, because I don't think a stand, I'm not sure, but I don't know the depth of a school bus versus the depth of those tandem spaces.
Right.
Clearly, if it could fit, the school bus could pull in for the one drop-off, but if not, it would be arm raised, one-time drop-off, one-time pickup.
Okay. And the safety, and the safety staff is out there before and after pickups and drop-offs? They're not out there at noon, let's say?
Correct.
They're not out there all day?
Right. I, we wouldn't anticipate that we would need them, so we'd rather have them inside with the students.
Okay.
But certainly, they would come out to supervise, you know, I'm speculating if a student were to go back for a period, I mean, it's been something that's come up in conversation, but it depends on the individual student and what their individual need is. But if that student, for example, is going back to ETHS for the six out of nine periods, that safety officer would certainly escort them out. A lot of our, you know, our, the person who would be coming over to pick them up could also be an additional safety officer. They've all been trained to drive those buses, and, you know, they all operate with radios, and so it's a pretty simple means of communication for us to make sure that the student would be properly escorted out of the building and onto the bus.
Okay. And then, you mentioned that there's, in the documents, that mentioned that there's signage on the building. So, given that we're going to put a lot of young people in an area where people aren't used to having young people, right? They might be used to them now up on dumpster, but they're not here. Is there other additional street signage you were anticipating on putting, like caution, school ahead?
So, that came up at DAPR?
Yeah.
And I don't know her name, but Scott might know, there was someone from the engineering department, I think?
Yes, a city engineer, Biggs, of our Biggs.
Okay. So, we had a short discussion on that, and she, I don't want to speak for her, but my recollection is in her opinion, she wouldn't expect a large need for the low number of students that we're proposing. We're never expecting this to get to be 50 or 100. We don't want it to grow. I mean, our ultimate goal is to bring students back to the campus if that's appropriate. And, you know, some of them are at other places, like Park School or a serving school that is where they'll stay. But she certainly said that should the need arise for school zone sign, that sort of thing, I mean, we weren't really looking at, for example, a crosswalk, because the whole point is, we don't really want to interrupt the neighbors to the west. But she said certainly if we needed, or, you know, if they came out and determined that some sort of signage was needed for like a school zone, they would be happy to work with us on that.
Okay. And you said that your plan is that there are 20 to 22 students now with the intention to grow to 40. How quickly do you think you're going to get to 40 students?
Do you want me to talk? Do you want to talk? Again, I've heard this conversation a lot, but I'm happy to let you, I don't know, I'm on a roll.
Got to get it all on the record, which is why we keep asking you the same question.
No, it's okay. So, we're thinking, you know, hopefully, we would start with about 22 students, but, you know, we don't, we don't really want to have those conversations until all these other things are, you know, set. So, we, capacity-wise, with our architect's advice, we could grow to 40, but again, you know, how quickly? Certainly not year one. We don't want 40, you know. We'll be really happy with 22, and if we gain a few students every year, we'll be great with that. We, this is, you know, something that we don't take lightly, and so we want to make sure that we grow at a modest pace. And ultimately, our goal is not really to get the kids here, because ultimately, like I said, we want to get them back to the main campus, but if there's a student who's currently in Arlington Heights during the day, or Displanes, or Highland Park, we feel like it's much better for the student to be more connected to the school and the community during the day, not just when they get off that bus. But ultimately, our goal is to help kids transition when appropriate back into the main campus. So, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, I would say if we grew to 40 in five years, that'd be great. If we never get to 40, that's okay, too.
Right. You said your lease was 10 years, so is that what your expectation is? Is that's all you're going to stay?
No.
I mean, what happens, what happens, is there, is there a scenario where this experiment fails and you abandon ship?
Well, we don't like to think of it that way. And again, I'm not the programmatic person, I'm the finance person, right? So, I want to keep a 10-year space, 10 years, and more. And there have certainly been, you know, options to renew, to be discussed, and I think, you know, it's been, I don't want to say surprising, but it's been really reassuring that the landlord is clearly as committed to this project as we are. And you can tell by some of the other tenants that he recently has, you know, brought into the space. So, I mean, for us, ideally, it would be, again, speaking for myself, a forever situation unless every student who is possible, every student that it makes sense for is back on campus. Right now, we have 92, 92 students off-campus. That's down from about 130, probably four years ago. So, not all of those 92 students will even be eligible for this location because of their needs. So, you know, if we could have a quarter of those kids back in the community during the day, we think it'd be a great thing. And, you know, we're currently spending a lot of money, that, a lot of money that's going to outside either public districts or private therapeutic day schools outside of the city, where in turn, I mean, our special education department knows how to educate kids in special education. So, we feel like we can do it better, we can do it closer, and we can make it more personal for the student experience. So, as long as we have kids eligible for this, we're committed to it. And it's, it's kind of a win-win for us, because I would rather pay 12 salaries in Evanston than write checks to outside schools to the tune of $55,000 a year in some cases that have no connection to this community.
And deliveries. So, food is delivered. When is that delivery made, and how is that delivery made?
So, we have an awesome full-service nutrition services department at ETHS, for those of you who might not know. We have a full kitchen that looks like some of the grandest hotel kitchens I've ever seen. We have a staff of about 35 people, and we provide all the meals for the, bless you, for the K through 5 students at District 65, in addition to our own students. So, I don't know the number, but it's somewhere in the 6,000 meals per day that we provide. So, adding an extra 25 won't be an issue. It'll be all done in-house. Meeting, we follow the federal nutrition guidelines. We have about 40% of our students are free or reduced. They do receive free lunches. And we'll be personally taking breakfast, lunch, and snacks from our kitchen three blocks away. We have a cargo van, pull up in the drop-off space, drop off once a day, because breakfast and snacks can be refrigerated. So, we have already kind of talked about that.
So, is that drop-off before the school day begins, then?
So, again...
Because you're providing breakfast?
It's kind of a minor thing for us that we haven't nailed down specifically.
Yeah.
But when we had the conversation, what would happen is, the meal would be delivered mid-morning, which is how District 65's meals are run. District 65 picks up from us, but they're delivered mid-morning, because the snack a lot of times isn't perishable, but then the lunches are freshest, and breakfast typically can be refrigerated until the next morning.
Okay.
So, when the kids get there, the breakfast is already on-site, whether it's, you know, bagels or sandwiches or whatever. So, there is a small, very small kitchen counter area near the multipurpose room. It's not a cooking facility, but typically, lunch would be delivered fresh, and then breakfast for the next morning would come at the same time. So, one delivery a day.
Okay. And what exactly are you doing to the outside of the building?
So...
Feel free to make somebody else talk.
Well, that would have to be Athie again. So, other than the ADA, you know what, Athie, you probably should talk about that. One thing I will say is, it came up in DAPR, the blacktop is in bad, bad shape, so we have committed to patching and repairing the asphalt, and then we'll have to figure out, there's some curb there that's in pretty bad shape, which we would make sure that that is all.
You're taking that on as part of your scope of work versus the landlord's scope of work?
Um, we haven't really determined that yet, because it was kind of a need.
You're still negotiating?
I was thinking you were going to say city, because it was curbs, but...
Nice try.
So, I don't know. Athie, do you want to speak to that? Because you've had more conversations about that than me.
Sure. So, Mary pretty much covered all of the site improvements. As far as the building itself, the existing exterior doors would be replaced. The south doors would be replaced, because right now, they are not ADA compliant, they do not have a leaf that is wide enough. So, we are replacing that with a new leaf that's wide enough, as well as having an actuator to assist with ADA access to the building, and then replacing the existing north door with essentially the same kind of door, but providing panic hardware required for our occupant load on this building. We are proposing on the elevation right now, a potential new wall signage location. We have not designed that or gone into more details with that, because we know that that will require DAPR review at that point again as well. But we'd like some kind of signage to indicate this is, you know, the entrance for the school, this is where students should go, and to pretty much signify what the new tenant in that space would be. That is really the only, am I missing anything?
Are some of the shrubs being, the beautification? Are you changing any of the other windows?
We are not changing the windows.
It's just the doors. Okay.
Right. Yeah, the planter box shown right now on the south side of the south door is an existing planter box that would stay. There is currently one in between the two doors, which would be eliminated in order to accommodate for the ADA access for the doors.
Okay. And one of the DAPR comments was that you would provide actual signage for each of the parking spaces versus just labeling it on the ground? Actual signage? I'm assuming you guys are amenable to that?
Yeah, I don't, and Scott, I don't know if you have a recollection, I don't, I don't remember, I do remember them talking about, you know, posting the purpose of each space, and we're fine whatever the requirement is. Our only thought was that the signs are so easily knocked over when someone's plowing the spaces. At the, at the ETHS main campus, unless our reserved parking is on a fence, we typically do mark the ground, but we re, we mark, re-mark it every year. So, we're certainly happy to do either. We were just trying to make it so that plows wouldn't knock the signs, but if, Scott's recollection, I don't know if Athie remembers, but we're happy to do signs if that's the preference.
Okay. And is, are the signs for 1233 Hartree getting marked as well, so you don't have people accidentally parking in their spots? Because if you look at the site plan, right?
Yeah, it's really continuous.
1225, sorry, 1225.
35.
Yeah.
We're 35 and 33, 35 to the north.
Right. So, three of those parking spots out front, three of those parking spots.
Oh, Sam, I think 1225, got you.
So, for 1225.
Yes. There would be three reserved spots. The owner's already spoken to that tenant. Yes, they would be marked.
But you're providing signage for those as well?
Yes, we're happy to.
So, that you don't get people parking in them and irritating neighbors?
Yeah, and the nice thing is, I mean, the way that our vestibule is structured, there's really like a safety person stationed right inside the door, and then an office person directly inside of the door. Athie, can you, yeah. So, there's an office person and then a little safety workstation. So, it's going to be hard not to catch someone who's not parking where they should be. And, you know, we're, we're really strict about parking at the main campus, because we just don't have enough of it.
Right. You have to be.
So, we, we're kind of, we feel like we're kind of in that business already, and we're not. We're, you know, we're not trying to be an infringing neighbor. They've had the luxury of having all those spots available, and we're already displacing the lady who works in the realty office. So, we're, we're not trying to cause a problem.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board members?
Uh, what did, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, hours of operation, what, what time do you open? What time do you close?
Sorry, I don't remember. I'm gonna get it wrong. I think it's about nine to two-thirty, but.
Hi, Linay Walls, Director of Special Education, sixteen-hundred Dodge. So, our hours right now will be about fifteen minutes before the start of the regular school day. At the main campus, we start at eight-thirty-two for Period One. At the public day school, we're looking to start at about eight-fifteen. That staggered schedule allows for the ease of transition of our students if they need to integrate into the main campus at any point during the school day.
And when do you close?
I think we're looking at two-thirty, two, two-thirty-
So, the building will be used-
Two-thirty-three o'clock.
Like, the teachers get there at?
So, the teacher's schedule would not change. They'll be on the same schedule as, as the teachers at the main campus, which is eight to four daily.
Eight to four, okay.
Yes.
And is there any plan on keeping the building open at night for events? Or does all of that sort of stuff happen at ETHS?
Not currently, any night events. In that first year, we just really like to get the programmatic and the educational pieces going, and to integrate the kids and the families back to the main campus for evening events. For example, we just had course selection night on the main campus last week. So, our students would all be a part of that. We wouldn't run separate programming for that.
Do you have an occasional open house?
Possibly.
You've been open house occasionally for new students?
And that open houses at night, then?
So, so if there's a new student-
Yeah.
We would like for that student and the parent to come during the school day to see how the school operates. So, any type of open house or touring would be at night, I'd imagine, so it wouldn't be disruptive. But that would not occur very often. I believe at the main campus, we may do that once a year, where the parents get an opportunity to come in and follow the student's schedule. So, we might model something like that, but that wouldn't be a regular occurrence.
Great, thank you.
Can you speak to how this plan has been communicated to the families of the children this facility might serve, and how it's been received by those families?
This plan has not yet been communicated to those families. We don't know the timeline of us making it through the city processes, and so I want to make sure that we've met all the criteria before we start marketing to our families.
Do you anticipate that it will be received favorably?
By most, yes. I do.
Anything else from anyone? Great, thank you very much. Why don't you guys have a seat? We'll see if there's any, any public comment. So, is there anybody here who'd like to speak? Come on up. If you can, start with giving us your name and your address, please.
I might have to swear.
Oh, yeah, I forgot, you weren't here when we started, so let's go back. And you gotta raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Name an address, please.
Darlene Cannon.
Oh. Go ahead.
And there's another person also. Darlene Cannon, thirteen-seventeen Pittner. I'm within the five hundred feet. Let's see, couple of things here. Initially, when we heard about the off-campus school from sources within the school, we were told that it was behavior-disorder students that were coming, that were gonna be coming there. And so, the question we asked is, what about these students that prevents them from educating them on-campus? When Dr. Walls spoke to, at the ward meeting, and let me just backtrack. Not only were they BD kids, we were told they were mostly minority kids. When she spoke at our ward meeting in December, she said they were mostly white kids from Highland Park, who were autistic. We asked our alderman three times in open meeting, what was the status? Was anything happening? He said no. On November eighth, at the Plan Commission, Plan Committee, Chairman Ford asked for public comment. We weren't notified, so public could not comment. We don't feel that the process was fair. We were not notified in ample time, and now they've done the tax amendment to allow for this to, for this type of educational facility within the I-two, the I-two zoning. So, as I said, the process wasn't fair. No one noticed, notified us, and here we are, and they're going through the process. And it's different, I said, as I said, you know, before, in other communities in Evanston, there's a process. They notify the residents that there's gonna be a change, and they have meetings, they discuss it, but this was done behind our backs.
So, just to be clear, though, your primary concern is, the, is it, is your primary concern the process, or is your primary concern-
My primary, well, there's two concerns.
The students who are coming?
Because I haven't really been able to get a clear, I'm not asking for confidential student information. But I'd like a precise answer as to who is the population of kids? Because we've, I've heard from administrators that they're the bad kids, the only way to put it, they're the BD or ED, maybe they don't use BD anymore, kids who go to schools in Des Plaines, or St. Joseph. And then, I said, when she came in, she said that they were mostly white and autistic kids. You know, I felt like that was like on purpose to tell us to, you know, calm us down, and not, you know, have us so upset about the situation. And, yeah, we're, and the next part is, because we were not notified properly, I brought it to the school board's attention, and they just said that it, the responsibility lied on the city and on the alderman. And like I said, in two open meetings-
Right.
We asked him about it. He said that most likely, it was not gonna go through at all.
Okay.
And all along, this process took place behind our backs.
All right, I'm sure we can, they'd be happy to address, we'll let you guys address when all the public comment's done. So, I'm sure they'll be happy to address your concerns.
Okay.
Great, thank you so much for coming out, I appreciate it. Is there anybody else?
Mary Beth, can I just, or maybe I should hold my question for Scott?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's let everybody talk. Oh, I can't remember if she's here. All right, I've done a bad thing. I don't, I apologize, I don't remember if you were here when I swore everybody in. So, I'm gonna, everybody over there, if you're gonna speak, let's do it all again. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Betty Esther. I stay at nineteen-twenty-one Dewey. I'm not nowhere near that, but I'm asking a question as a taxpayer and a resident here in the community. You had mentioned that there was not going to be any street signs put up to designate that there is a school there. And in my other hat that I wear, which I work with the Citizen Network of Protection, and then something went up, mm, that's going to be a problem for the police. Because over there in that industrial area, I used to work over there, see the fellows smoking their beer, and Evanston has this small marijuana that they can have, which they should just get rid of all of it. But that's my opinion. So, they, they will be telling, do I write this person a ticket? Do I arrest them? Because, see, then they are close to a school, and the Illinois State Criminal Law says, if you're within a school district within that zone, and you commit a crime, that crime, which was minor at this point, then it's doubled, because you're in a school zone. So, then, that is not fair to the policeman, because they need to know that that is a designated school zone, and it's also doubly important to the citizens, so that they know, so they don't be breaking the law. So, I think you should require them to have that signage put there.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments, I appreciate it. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Tricia Conley, and I live at nine-oh-eight Greenwood. I am here to ask the following questions. There's a real concern about the where and the when, the mandated special-use public notice regarding the zoning tax amendment change, and when, where, and when it was published, before the Plan Commission meeting? And why weren't the neighbors in the second ward neighborhood afforded a notice, as in my ward, the fourth ward, and any, just about any other ward in this, in this town would be afforded? I mean, we know that if you wanna paint your porch, boy, you're gonna have to go stand in front of people and, and, you know, rally up why you should be able to do that. And this is a pretty major thing. So, that's the question we have.
Do you mind if I interrupt for just a second?
Yeah.
So, I appreciate your concern with that. However, as the zoning board, that is not in our purview to address, right? So, I appreciate that you have concerns, and we're disappointed in how the process took place, but unfortunately, there's nothing that we can do about that, so.
Okay. Do you have any recommendation on that?
You should talk to the city manager, because go, go up the chain.
Okay.
Because we are just the zoning board, and we can deal with zoning appeals. We can't deal with Plan Commission, and process, and all that sort of thing. So, we can barely-
Okay. So, I would like to ask all of you, just to keep the, the following in mind, and that is that surrounding residents, they have concerns about the location of this alternative school in a majority-minority neighborhood. And the residents' denial of their right to a public hearing on the zoning tax amendment change for this school has reinforced their feeling of discrimination and disregard towards this population of Evanston. Residents request that the zoning change be rescinded until neighbors are properly informed in a public hearing. I will take this up with the city manager. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for coming out, I appreciate it.
Can I just address, I think it'll-
Let's wait till the end.
Fair.
Let's make it simpler. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight? Sure, come on up. Did I swear you in? Did you just walk in? No, all right.
Finger length.
Right hand. Do you swear to affirm or tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
Yes.
Fabulous. Give us your name and address, please.
Tasha Finley, thirteen-nineteen Pittner.
Thank you.
My question was, how come the students can't remain at Evanston Township, this beautiful facility, where they can be, you know, have physical education, and, you know, there's a nurse on staff in case something were to arise?
Okay, great. I'm sure they'd be happy to answer that.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Now, I've sworn you in, you've been here for a while. Okay.
Yes, I'm sort of reiterating what-
Name an address, though.
Oh, Kira Kelly.
Yep.
I'm twenty-four-thirty-six Orienton. I don't live nearby, but I, I do have the same concerns, and I know you said it's not really your jurisdiction, but I just wanted to log in that, you know, certainly, we understood from the Johanna Leonard, who's the Economic Development Chair, that two things were supposed to happen. A Plan, a public hearing was scheduled through the Plan Commission, and it was supposed to be noticed in the local paper. And it, also, I believe that people within five hundred feet were supposed to be notified. And I know that's, again, not part of this, but it just seems like it has compromised the process a little bit here. So, I don't know what happens now. I mean, it's easy enough to just say, whoops, sorry, we're unhappy with that, but it just doesn't seem fair to the residents nearby, because as they said, they do have some, some serious concerns, and they had a right to bring these to someone's attention at some point, so.
Thank you very much for coming out, I appreciate that.
Can I ask, Scott, can I ask you a question? Is there a record of the notices that have been posted on this?
For a, for this particular item, there's a notice for the special use that is mailed out to the five-hundred-foot radius, and also notice in newspaper and sign on-site. Some of the, the commentators were asking about the previous process, the tax amendment process.
Right, the tax amendment.
Tax amendment applies to all properties within whatever zoning district or city-wide, in this case, all I-two properties.
Got it.
There's not a mailed notice for that. There is a notice in the newspaper. The Plan Commission meetings are also noticed, you know, on the website, with forty, forty-eight hours' notice on that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, wait, so I just need to clarify that. So, for a text amendment, a text amendment does not require a public notice, is that what I understood?
There is not mailed notice for a text amendment.
So, notice is done in what manner?
It'd be in the newspaper, and then notice on the website for the, and posted on, onsite hearings in City Hall.
Okay. And then, there was a, the applicant presented at a second ward meeting as well on the, on this proposal? Is that true?
I believe they described that, I was not present there.
All right. So, now that we've had some clarification, there are additional questions from homeowners. So, you gotta come up, you gotta come up, because we can't hear you. There are some people who love to watch this, so we gotta hear everything you have to say.
Thank you. Scott, can you please tell me what paper it was published in?
Sure, the Evanston Review.
The tax amendment?
Yes, Evanston Review.
Okay, do you have the date on that, and everything?
I can look for that, and-
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, we can get you that information, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Is that everyone from the people within five hundred feet? Yes, you've all commented? All right. We're gonna give you guys an opportunity to come up and answer their questions, address some of their concerns, however you should like.
I, I just wanna clarify a couple things, because I, I think we've already said a lot of the, the things, but, so, we've been to, in this order, Planning and Development, we were referred back to Plan Commission, Planning and Development, City Council, that was for the first part of the process, the zoning tax amendment. Which, as Scott mentioned, and I know our attorney would like to just confirm, that because it doesn't apply to one property, how could you mail postcards to everyone within, okay. So, then, we've been to DAPR twice, we've been now to this committee meeting, and then we'll go back to Planning and Development, and back to the City Council. So, in addition to that, Linay and I were, we both spoke about the programmatic parts of this initiative at the second ward meeting at the request of the alderman, and-
Just to be clear, do you have a date on that, when that meeting was?
If I look in my calendar, yes, but, so, I mean, our district-
The calendar tells all.
Our district was closed for two weeks, starting December twenty-second. It was well before that. And, and we made sure that before we left for the two-week closure, that we mailed out postcards to the same people on the special-use postcard list from the city, inviting them to a coffee the second day we got back, which was January ninth. At that meeting, we certainly discussed, you know, the kids who would be eligible for this program haven't been determined, so we're not trying to be evasive. We just, we don't know the answers to some of that. We were certainly asked about the racial makeup, I'm not sure why it's relevant, to be honest, but we were asked about the racial makeup of our off-campus students. And, and Linay spoke for quite a while at that meeting, and if you wanna come clarify anything, feel free. But Linay did, you know, give the information that our off-campus students are about fifty-five percent white, twenty-nine percent black, and the balance is Hispanic and mixed race. We were never told, we never, I mean, we wouldn't say, these kids are behavior-issue kids. These kids are bad kids. In fact, what our superintendent said at the coffee, which six people attended, four of whom live in the ward, I believe, he said, "These are our children." One of our board members came to the alderman's ward meeting in December and said, "Correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't these our children?" Our superintendent said, the, literally, "These are not bad kids. These are our kids. These are the same kids you're at the movie theater with on the weekend, and these are the same kids you're at Starbucks, Starbucks with after school." So, I'm gonna stop, because it, it's a personal, I think it's a very personal thing, and I'm, we certainly have not tried to be evasive. This has not been a short process for me, and I have been, throughout all of these parts of the process, since July of twenty-seventeen. And here we are in January of twenty-eighteen. So, I just wanna say that we've not been hiding anything, we, it wasn't appropriate to discuss in public at a point, because it affects our children, it affects new staff positions, people have questions, and we were told what the process was, and we followed it. So, I don't know, Brian, if you wanna-
Sorry, before you go away, I've got two questions for you. One is, one of the questions from one of the neighbors was, why this location versus being able to keep them at ETHS?
Oh, I'm gonna let Linay address that, because there are, there are things called IEPs that are individualized placements for a reason. And, but Linay very well addressed that at our coffee, and I would love for her to address that again.
I would love her to.
Okay.
The other, yep, the other question is, just to, to address the issue of potential disciplinary actions that may happen at the school, right? I'm assuming that there are some staff available to the, to the students and to, in the, in the building, that have the ability to step in and take charge of a, of a situation. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
I say that not having kids-
Similar to the main campus.
-I was in school a long time ago. So, explain, so explain what, what that entails.
Okay. So, if there is a student in a classroom or in the building who needs some level of intervention, that usually starts with that immediate classroom staff. If it cannot be resolved with the immediate classroom staff, the staff may call the student social worker, they may call a dean, or they may call safety staff. And the people report, and they intervene as appropriate. So, that would be the same process.
Okay, great. And then, you're going to address why we need kid, why the kids can't stay at ETHS, and why they need a separate location.
Okay, I can talk about that.
Thank you.
But before I forget, the second ward meeting was December 14th.
Thank you.
Okay. So the majority of these students started at ETHS. They did not start off-campus unless the students were so significantly involved that they required another placement. For example, that would be our low-incidence students at Park School, all right? Otherwise, the majority of our students who are off-campus were once at ETHS, and for a variety of reasons, maybe the, the size of the school was too large for the student to navigate, maybe the student required additional social-emotional supports more frequently throughout the school day, maybe they required a smaller class size, maybe they required some other form of therapeutic intervention. That is what eventually led to a more restrictive placement. All of those decisions are made by the student's IEP team. And once the team makes that determination, and the parents agree and support, then we move for a change in placement. So our goal is to eventually, to the greatest extent possible, reintegrate as many students as we can to the main campus. What the public-day school serves is a next step before leaving the community. Right now, if we have a student at ETHS who the team decides needs a more restrictive placement, we don't have anything in Evanston to offer that student. So they leave our community. This school year, we've had six students who meet that scenario, right? They were either newly identified, their needs were beyond what we could provide at the local high school, so we find private therapeutic placements for those students. If we have the public-day school option, that would be the next step, right? In our neighborhood, three blocks away, to provide the smaller environment, the supported environment with ETHS staff, and keeping them connected to the community.
Great. Thank you very much.
I wanted to comment.
Yep.
Just wanted to add one thing. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Crowley, attorney for the High School District with forensic Rattlet. One thing, I just, I think there was a misunderstanding, a mischaracterization as far as the notice requirements go, and I know this isn't your purview, but I just want it very clear, as you alluded to, there's many people watching, so I just wanted to be very clear. On the zoning text amendment process, there is no mailed notice required. All that is required is newspaper notice. For the special-use permit process, mailed notice is required. I think the confusion is, it's 6346C, which deals with map amendments and text amendments. For a map amendment, where you know this property, this very property is going to change zoning districts, that's when a mailed notice is required, but not for a text amendment. With that said, I understand some of the concerns from the community as far as, did we get proper notice on that issue? But since that time, as had been alluded to, we had a school district meeting, we had a ward meeting, and we have this meeting. Tonight is the, is the hearing for this process, and the community certainly got mailed notice for that. So I just want that to be very clear for the record.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So you guys get a chance to sum up, if you'd like, or you can, or you can call it a day. It's totally your choice.
I, you know, as I said, we've been to so many meetings, and we've, we've, I don't know that there's much else to say except that our main priority is our kids, and they are our kids. And we believe in this, and we think it's the right thing to do, whether it's a stepping stone, coming back to the community, or, or, you know, before they go out of the community. This is not a bad thing, and, and it's been, we've taken a lot of time to plan it, we've thought it through, and I've been in this field long enough to know that I can't do something and try to be secretive about it, and, and I would stand by that as the day is long, that we've not tried to be secretive. We've tried to be appropriate where it's necessary for the concern of our kids and our employees, and what opportunities this might present for them. And I certainly feel like I've been to a lot of city meetings, so I'll just end with that.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will close the record and go into deliberations. Thoughts from the other members of the board?
I, I do appreciate the concerns of the community in that they didn't feel as though they may have gotten to weigh in fully and completely, but I think that the issue of, of notice has been adequately addressed. And I think that the underlying concerns that have been expressed really pertain to how the school is going to operate at that location, and if it would have a negative impact on the residents who are in proximity, the other people in the community, and whether it will adequately serve the children. And I do believe that the team from ETHS has addressed those issues very well. I have seen the, so many of the manufacturing properties in Evanston undergo tax amendments, particularly the I-2, as manufacturing becomes inappropriate in a community where the tax rate just really doesn't allow for efficiencies in that regard. And so adaptive reuse of these properties, as, as you've seen, particularly this campus of industrial buildings, has been converted largely to service businesses for, for children and the community at large. So I think that the use that's being proposed here is consistent with that, and for the many reasons that they have noted, proximity to the high school, bringing the students back from far-flung communities where they spend long commutes, is, is a service to those children and to their families. And in that environment, in that rather closed area where this school is going to open, the, the ability to regulate for the good of the students as well as the community immediately present is, I think, has been demonstrated to be well-thought-out, and I don't think that there need be concerns that there would be an overflow of activities that would negatively impact the neighborhood. So I, I think that this is consistent with what is happening there. Otherwise, and I'd love to see these kids get back to the community and closer to the high school where they might engage in a broader range of activities. So I, I think that this is a recommendation to City Council.
I pretty much agree with everything Muffy just stated. I also, I understand, and I've heard the concerns regarding the process of notification from those in the community. That said, I think what we've heard from the applicant is a spirit and an intention of engaging the public at various points in the process, so I don't believe there was a deliberate, deliberate, you know, means in trying to not share information to the extent that they're able to at this point in their planning of what that student body will look like. And I do think philosophically, the needs of the students will be best served in, in bringing them back, you know, and having them served in the community. So just sort of at a philosophical level, I feel like this, the needs of the students are best served on a, on a sort of zoning-special-use level. I feel like the applicant has done a good job in addressing concerns of Dapper and, you know, other concerns that have been raised.
I'm in support of the project. I think it's, it's okay to be there. I would encourage the school and city architects to work a little bit more on the signages. I think this will be very important in this environment over there. And I would agree with the neighbors about this signage that says "school" relatively, it is at a certain distance from the school, so that everybody knows that there is a school over there. Also, I think that you will need, in the morning hours, to have these, your safety people to be on the street and guarantee the safety of the, of the bus and whatever happens over there. Still, it's an industrial thing, and there's a big traffic in the morning, so you have to be careful with that. Also, I would encourage you to think about the security at night, and lights around this place, whatever it takes. Otherwise, I would support the project.
I want to agree with all of Carol's comments because this location is newly a school, and this entire area is newly special uses that are related to children. And in order for this to be a fit, I feel like the community has to embrace this project process. I feel like, I don't know about the notice, I'm sure it was legal. However, with this being so close to residential, I just wish that the community was more in support because it is, it is going to take some community support to turn this industrial project into a school at this location. I agree with the project. If I'm not looking at the program, I don't have a child that is school age with special needs. I don't know about the program. And so if I look at this purely as a project, I can agree with the project, and I can support the project.
I'm in support of the project. I think every, everything that's been said prior to myself, I agree with, with everybody here on the board. It's a good project. I'd like to see the kids back into the community. That's ideal, that's the ideal thinking, I guess, for everyone involved. And yes, we need the support from the community itself to make, to greet and to receive these students back into the community.
Great, thank you very much. So for the sake of brevity, I agree with everything that everyone has said. The thing that I like is that you're bringing the dollars back to Evanston. I love that. I, I hate that we send all this money to other communities in addition to kids being here, right? The other benefit is that we're taking that money that we send other places, and we're putting it back into our community, which is only gonna help us that much more. So I think this is a good, a good option for this location. So with that, we are gonna go through the nine standards for special uses. If you have anything to add, feel free. If you don't, that's okay, too. It is one of the uses, special uses specifically listed in the zoning ordinance. Now that we...
It's because of the tax amendment, right?
Right. So now that it has gone through the text amendment phase, it is one of those uses that can be put into the zoning district, so that standard has been met. Number two, it is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the adopted comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance as amended from time to time. Certainly, one of the, one of the uses of the, one of the purposes of the comprehensive general plan is adaptive reuse and to enhance the diversity of business and commercial and, along with residential as well. So I think that by mixing in this, 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 this use with other uses in that area that also cater to that same age group, I do think that we, that this standard has been met. Number three, it will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types in the immediate neighborhood, and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole. It won't cause, I don't think it will cause a cumulative effect. I don't think that there's gonna be a negative effect at all. I think that it'll actually be helpful to bring some youth and some vibrancy to that area. I do think that, that also bringing the kids back to the, back from other communities, back to Evanston is a great thing, and so that, for those reasons, that standard has been met. Number four, it does not interfere with or diminish the value of the property in the neighborhood. So I believe that by having a, a building that is able to be used and inhabited is certainly of more benefit to the community than an empty building, which is prone to, can have problems with vandalism or other things like that. So I do believe that by putting a good use in that building, there will be, it will actually increase the value of the property in the neighborhood. So I think that that standard has been met. Number five, it can be adequately served by public facilities and services. It certainly is served by CTA and PACE routes that are down the street, and it is already served by city services, so I believe that that standard has been met. Number six, it does not cause undue traffic congestion. There's been some discussion about how many students and how those students are getting to the school. As I see it, there is a fair amount of distribution between kids who walk and kids who bike and kids who get there in vehicle transportation, so vehicular transportation. So I don't think that there's going to be a great influx. I think that the, the amount of traffic will certainly be less than a daycare center. There will be a couple more cars on the street, but I do think that, given staff's attention to the details and the applicant's attention to the details, we've been able to ameliorate any concerns we might have about how that traffic is handled in a safe manner for all the neighborhood as well as the kids who are coming into the neighborhood. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number seven, it preserves significant historical and architectural resources. Well, there aren't any historical resources, but the architectural resource is the adaptive reuse of the building, which in Evanston, we love. Reuse the buildings for whatever you can to make them efficient and useful again. So I think that that standard has been met. Number eight, it preserves significant natural and environmental features, which does not apply. And number nine, it complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it's located and other applicable ordinances, except to such extent that such, except to the extent that such regulations have been modified through the plan development process or the grant of a variation. None of that applies. I'm sure there'll be a business license and all that good stuff, so I'm sure that they will comply with all of that. Now, as I see it, there are six conditions. One is employees park off-site. Two, that the parking spaces should have signage. Three, the bike parking for 12 spaces. Four, there are improvements to the parking lot that include striping and...
Seal coating.
Seal coating, thank you. Five, that there is no street drop-off. And six, which I think became, is an issue with some of the board members, is that there becomes some school zone signage on the street to alert drivers through that area that there are children in the area.
Did you address security outside during drop-off and pickup time?
Uh, I didn't...
Is that something that we...
I don't think so. Because I think that's part of their regular process. I mean, you guys want to keep everybody safe more than we do. So I don't think we want to address hours of operation. Is that fair?
I don't think that's necessary as a school does.
I don't think so either, but Scott, you don't want us to do hours of operation, right? Like we would for a special use, or do you want us to throw in some hours of operation?
To the discretion of the board, I think that the applicants described normal hours of operation and described that there would be, you know, occasional hours outside that time.
Okay. So for the board, do we just want to say 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM? And let it be at that?
Yeah.
Okay, so then hours are 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. All right? Good luck. This is a recommendation to the, to City Council.
Okay, I'm gonna try it. In the order of Set 17ZMJV0109, 1233 to 1235, Hartree Avenue, I move that we make a positive recommendation to City Council with the following conditions. Help me with this. Okay. That employees park off-site in the corner parking lot. That the parking has signage?
Yes.
Is that what you said? Okay. That bike parking is provided.
For 12 spaces.
12 spaces, okay. Okay. That there are improvements made to the asphalt parking lot.
That include seal coating and striping.
That include seal coating and striping. That there is no street drop-off. That there is school zone signage added to the project, and that the hours of operation be from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
And that it be developed in substantial compliance with a testimony...
With the testimony here at this, given at this hearing.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? And with a vote of six to zero, you go to City Council, the next step in the process. Thank you. All right, so that is the last case of the evening, so...
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? And with that, we are adjourned.